Hello everyone, welcome back to the English session and you are watching target SSC GL CHSL English session number eight. This session low, there are very important models and very, very important questions and let's get started with the first question. Yes, if you see the first question, select the word which means the same as the group of words given. It would be the name and time they one word substitute and time I've been telling you many times competitive exams low in mukyanga English low. Staff selection commission and again mannequin vocabulary low one word substitutes chala important. Chorandi that which can be drawn into a thin wire. Yeah they talk a thin wire kind of manam malchikalamo. Then we want to even a pill some day ductile and time we don't know options sure and the right answer is ductile. The right answer is ductile, so what is ductile is anything, what is ductile is anything that you can be drawn, anything that can be drawn. Anything that can be drawn into a thin wire is known as ductile. But under keys smooth and it's smooth and it tells you and flexible and anything which can be burnt, anything, anything that can be bent in any shape. It want to shape load in a manam dani bandish eggalikidani flexible and time until so. And brittle and entertain a chalaman the key tell you go pocho brittle and easy go viri poe the name and time and brittle and time. So the meaning of the word brittle is anything which can be broken, which can be broken is known as brittle. So something that can be drawn into a thin wire is known as ductile. So it's a direct question from the vocabulary part that is one word substitute. Let's have a look at the next question, too unimportant to consider. Important kani dan even a pillustamo any adigaru, too unimportant to consider. Options to say, nothing diminutive trivial and noticeable. So yeah the important kado any adigar kada, so which is not important, the question is which is not important and adigar. Noticeable and a important take a kabati, it is right answer kado. Diminutive and a what is the meaning of the word diminutive? Diminutive and a diminution and tarantetakku dala in in Telugu we say taggadam ledantre reduce sabdamantam right? So addicoda right answer kado, manki kavalsana word enka wali important kani di. Too unimportant and or chorandi, something which is not important and narrow. Kabata the right answer is trivial my dear friends, so what is the meaning of the vocabulary trivial? Trivial and a having little importance are no important. We're a kna chapalne trivial and almost something which has a very, very, very less importance and time. That the ga amta important kani dani kosam manam maatlaite, we use the vocabulary there trivial, we use the vocabulary there trivial. So Chris and then we watch in the kabati range as an a like the situation came. So important kani dani mane amantama nay chappan me kosam, something which is not important is trivial and narrow. But it's something which is very important into me re chappandi, something which is very important name and time. Significant and time o da name and time and it pivot tal and time. Manam yepur opportunity durkina koda, we should make sure that. Tellison a vocabulary ni manam relate chase kodam balva vocabulary baakurtuntundi. So trivial and a something which is not important. The opposite is pivotal, the meaning of the word pivotal is something which is very, very, very important and time. Pivotilage inco important word go down on this significant and a code and time. Significant and a word mammalga manam use chase a word a communication lo kuda generalga. Significant is a word that we use very commonly kada, pivotal is very common in examinations, okay, remember this. And you see the next question here, Ekramana can be stone that mukyavayna filling the blank, so filling the blank at the church orandi. Charlie Chaplin's rise to fame paralleled the dash growth of Hollywood movies and narrow. In the first decades of the century, when options like well name on it's very important to understand the meaning of the questions like this. It want to questions answer cheyal and definitely it's important to get the meaning proper. So Charlie Chaplin's rise to fame and now ricca de mannequin a answer itchesaru. Charlie Chaplin's rise to fame, fame and a chala manchi gauravam kada, chala popularity right? So Charlie Chaplin okasari ka amta popular avada mede ete undo and narrow. So we are talking about Charlie Chaplin's extraordinary and you know huge popularity. And a kachitanga popularity amanar and a parallel da and narrow and a equal i point and. Atene popularity den to equal i pointi and a popularity to equal a gunali and a dekoda popular i undaali. And a kachitanga ekra mona kunde word, pop-pop-popular positive word a kabati, ekra koda positive word a undi tirali kada. So ekra miru choose te, delayed and a the negative word ochindi. Alaga e progressing paralleled the progressing growth, appudapre progress out and on a la and time. Already progress i pointa and a explosive growth and time and adbu tanga explosive growth and time right? What is the meaning of the vocabulary explosive? So Charlie Chaplin to watch an adhu tavaena popularity, daantosama namai pendi antunnam. So daantai equal i point and a kachitanga equal i point and a repretanamo, daanikunde meaning koda equal gane undaali kada. And a it want to fill in the blanks she set up to definitely one should be very careful about the meaning of the given sentence. Kabati akka de mannequin kachitanga positive word a unda ekra options lo chala matiku manaki negative words unai right? Chalo, let's have a look at the next question chorandi. In the sentence identify the segment which contains the error, error record undo find out shame and narrow. So we have to find out the error. The jury was not able to reach final conclusion about who is the best singer in the final round of Indian Idol. So we all know a very popular program called Indian Idol right? So we'll addigan neenanti Indian Idol and a program low final, ah, final round low, you know, the final round low, final round low. Manaki yavaru gelustaranna, ok final conclusion, inka yavarki telli edantam. Why dear friends, me andar ki ok vishen tell us so, manaki grammar low ka section unti na name and time and a manam superfluous category and time amantamu. Superfluous category and a anavasar maina words oche category and mada. And a akka de a word avasram undadu, then we go example listano return back and time a return back and a anamu, anakoda du. Because written and a comeback, attu want expression ekra ochindi, final conclusion and narrow. To reach conclusion, conclusion and a final point, ekamali final and a word unda koda du, final conclusion and a undadu. And the kante final conclusion a word kaslo meaning a ledu, final conclusion, middle conclusion, starting conclusion and a untinda, undadu kada. Adhe point ekra manaki ochindi, but anyway final conclusion and a the wrong undika, nendu ko ne chappano. And the kate conclusion ne already final kabati, ekamali manu final conclusion a word imano use chekoda right? So ekka de manar then just cause a vision, superfluous categories manki chala ne untai. So superfluous categories manki chala ne untai, and then ndaka each an example and a the exams lo common ga kuda osso untundi. Like for example, return back and a word, chala saal exams lo manandaki kuda can be stone untundi. Return back and a word exams low, chala common ga is so untar. If present chappanato, final conclusion and a expression koda, it comes very commonly in competitive exams mukyanga. Staff selection and exams low, it or can be stone untundi, alage prepositions chepkenbukada manu chepkuntamo. Chalaman antar please sign on the document and are amantaru, please sign on the document and are, please sign on the paper and are. So please sign on the document le the please sign on the paper and a anakoda du. Alaga order and a ok mukyavayna word koda, chala important andi. So I ordered for a cup of coffee and are, no, I ordered for a cup of coffee. Chepkuntupote manaki chala ne untai, mean idea kosam koni examples ichana. So written tarvata back unda koda du because written and a comeback, written and a get back. So final conclusion low, final unda koda du because conclusion and a something final. Sign packen on unda koda du because sign and a put signature on. Karim manlo chalaman de maatlaite but a want time, please sign on the check, please sign on the document and a chala common ga manam. Use chase so ta very dangerous and very big error a the, sign packen on unda koda du. I ordered for a cup of coffee undadu, I ordered a cup of coffee. Inka chappal ante, chalaman de maatlaite but koda discuss about and a ok mistake chase so untar, kada ni miru ne untar? Discuss about and untar, today I am discussing about prepositions and taro. So discuss packen about ocha chance led because discuss and a, discuss and a talk about. Discuss and a talk about, ekamali manaki discuss packen about ocha chance ledu. It want to cases choose call the demon name and time and a anavasar maina cases and time and a final conclusion low final and a the unda koda du. Error and to find out shame and find out chadama, the strain of all the difficulties vexations and anxieties are more than he could bear. Athano bharinchaleeni kastalo athano, edurkoal sochindi. I think ekra manam deni gurich maatlaite namo, the strain of, if pray this strain of and a ekra point start in the subject hour. Strain kada, if pray take a strain of and a ok point start in the subject hour strain. But it's strain and a singular plurala singular, mari strain singular ayinapudo, subject singular it a verbu koda singular aavali kada. But ekra nte are it cheru is, me kardamayin the day topic of my dear friends, this topic is known as subject verb agreement. So subject verbal agreement chala important, dani manam baaganech koli. Subject verb agreement to mani purukoda mistakes and a the chekoda du. So the strain of all the difficulties vexations and anxieties are more kado is more. If pray them are a strain use chase mo, if pray them are a strain use chase mo, strain and a the positive word, subject word, singular subject a the. Subject butte verbu undari, the subject is singular, verbu also should be singular, the subject is plural, verbu also should be plural. So strain singular kabata kara, is undaali, very important point. Have a look at the next question, sentence improvement avasramite chaimani and narrow. Mari sentence improvement cheyal and a kachitanga manam, stani chadavi meaning ardhanches koli. Let's read the sentence once. All through my, all through my growing years, all through my growing years, I have been dashed to trillion for stories. And tales about the heroic exploits of various DTs. Neenuna life low, neenuna jevita kalam low, enno adhu tavaena stories finna no, enno kadhalu vinnanu, enno vishal tells kunna no. Sir, anta bondi kani, I have been and narrow, biru chusa ekra dem ochindi, I have been ochindi. Me re chappandi, if pre no sentence low grammar have been oste, if pre no sentence low grammar have been oste. Verb a form low undaali, see my dear friends, if pre na grammar manki have been oste, verb a form low undaali. Okvalla verbu manam active voice lotis kunta ING low undaali, passive voice this kute V three low undaali kada, there is no other option right? So I have been dashed to, neenu expose ayano and a neen chala vishal tells kunna and a but passive voice kabati. Here kachitanga expose aite unda koda du, exposed undaali. So I have been exposed to trillions of stories and time chorandi, first option is a right option. Sir, ekra koda expose unka kada ante, exposed unka ni, I have been exposed to trillions with the stories and ante. Then enno vandala valla kadhalu vinnanu on a chapdani ke, I have been exposed to trillions of stories and time okay? I have been exposed to trillions of stories and time, ekra exposed ravalii, I am repeating. Indikante, ekra exposed unka ravalante my dear friends, e particular grammar part edet ondo, it anta koda passive voice low undi. Passive voice and a verb a puru V three low undal, and the kama na verbu ni third form low pettavali savaasram untundi. This is a direct question, I take it a kevalam voice maatremi test cheledu, along with the voice, preposition koda touch eseru. And the ekka trillions of stories and narrow kani trillion with stories and ledu, very, very careful kadi ne choose koli, preposition plus voice. Okay question na two topics touch eseru. Have a look at the next question, mali sentence improvement ochindi chadu damo. Policy advisors often work closely with policy analysts and spend their time gathering information. To develop support and implement policies, policy ki samannechana advisors untar. Alaga policy ki samannechana vislay shakul untar, analyst untar, will andaro chala time spent just saru. The policies inka ela ba chase te bauntundi ani, but error and to chudama asalu. Ekra first option amanar and a spend his the time and narrow, ekra question name itcheru, option question name itcheru, spend their time and itcheru. But a their time a his a time a which is correct, yavarki gurich manam maatlaite namo, policy advisors gurich maatlaite namo. And the kakunda, policy analysts gurich maatlaite namo, and a policy advisors gurichi, policy analysts gurich maatlaite mandam. Anta mandi unna rukabati kachitanga, it anta koda manaki plural outundi right? But a anta plural ayinapu natural ga vela, subject is plural, the verb also must be plural, mari his a time yella ostan di, chance ledu right? Alaga ekra kani choose te manam, times and narrow, time and a word ki generalga manam, times and a word use shame. Spend their time gather and our question name itcheru, spend their time gathering. Ekra verb ochna putu, ekra mali verb bala undi jarandu form raval. Kabati I think the answer is no improvement, the given question is a beautiful question. Policy advisors often work closely with policy analysts and spend their time gathering information to develop support and implement policies. Ekra manam choose koli, advisors, analysts and narrow kabati kachitanga subject akka de plural ayindi. Reprate akra subject plural ayindo, kachitanga verbu koda plural avali, point number one, point number two, times and a word ledana visham manam nouns and a topic lo nechkuntam. Point number three, ekra ka verb ochna putu, immediate ga mali verbu ra koda jarandu form raval ante, this is a beautiful question from which we can derive three beautiful points. Let's have a look at the next question, iti koda sentence improvement a chudama. Nishani put her gifts aside, adent and akka de manakadha mai pointi, nishani put her gifts aside. I think meri kana observe just not a type of pony, side and a word, manki ekra doubt ga undi, and the side and a manam, e udyesam low. Pakka na betti ndi any chappali, and a pakka na betta dani aside and a kani side aite anamu. Error number one, sir, upon aadi koda manam pakka na betti, daanikoda manam compromise abvali anukunte, inco kera chudama. Putta nedi presenter pasta, ekri china putta nedi, writer wrong asalu, nishani and a person, singular person. Okvalla present tense anukunte, putsa ravalikada, okay, pony past tense anukunnam, past tense anukunte, putto problem led. And the brandi, iti past tense, but iti past tense unti, iti koda past tense sundal kada, iti past tense unti, iti koda past tense sundal kada. Kabati kachitanga ekra crossed kado, yeah unda likada, ekra unda li crosses kado, kachitanga crossed unda li kada. So yella halachin chena koda, manao oishar dhaini, ekra side kado, aside unda li, cross kado, crossed unda li. Ekra along kado, besides kado, kabati the right answer is the second option. Nishani put her gifts aside and crossed her legs in her seat, thana kochina gifts and a pakka na betti prashantanga kuchunaru. Ekra miru choose te, side ki aside ki una difference me the i question itcheru, chala beautiful question, iti careful ga study chase koni. At the same time, ekra sandarba watch in the kabati beside and a word gurich nay chaptanu. Manam prepositions and a topic lo koda deni gurich baaganech kuntamu, yakka de beside vaadali, yakka de besides vaadali and a point koda. We should be very careful about it, yakka de beside vaadali, yakka de besides vaadali and a point by the koda, one should be very careful about it. Beside and a pakka na and time, kani besides and a in addition to and time, beside and a pakka na and time, kani besides and a in addition to and time. And a iti kaakonda and time, okay na, but anyway ekra question aite maatrem easy ga undi. And the kante, ekra side and a word choose eventre wrong and a dhamay porantakakunda, tense koda ekra wrong tense undi. Okay, so select the incorrectly spelled word and narrow, so spelling words kachitanga adutunaro. SSC exams low, mukyanga CHSL, EGL and exams low, spelling errors compulsor ga adutunaro, careful ga chudama. So select the incorrectly spelled word and narrow, so ekra incorrectly spelled word enter choose te manu kani, plebiscite is a wrong spelling. Plebiscite is a wrong spelling, the right spelling is P L E B, P L E B I S C I T E, S C I T E. Plebiscite and a rakna chappal ante voting and a koda and time, plebiscite and a voting and a koda and time. If you want me to say the meaning in Telugu, I'll also try in Telugu, prajal deganunja bhi prayaan ni these kodam. Praja bhi praya sakaran and taru, pure Telugu. So plebiscite and a praja bhi praya sakaran and time, when you gather the information from the public on a particular issue. For example, a quotation these kunna government, it is right or wrong go on a chala mandini, opinion, opinion polla and a the anukundi, daan name and time and a plebiscite and time. Ekam me andar ki tellison a word se unai, analyzable and a something that can be analyzed, eh date a vislay shana cheyadanik anukulanga undo. Something you can understand is analyzable, easy and a koda and time. Centenarian and a yavarki a hundred years le the hundred plus untaiyavali manam. Centenarian and time, centenarian means a man who is, you know, a man who has hundred or hundred plus years. And now when we talk about mellifluence, my dear friends, mellifluence and a softly the smooth and time. Mellifluence and a softly the smooth and time. Mellifluence and a softly the smooth and time, especially mellifluence is a beautiful word that we use to talk about somebody's voice. The voice is very soft and smooth, yes, we use the word mellifluence, my dear friends. And let's have a look at the next question, next question chudama manam, next question name and narrow chorandi. Let's have a look at the next question, select the antonym of transient and narrow. My dear friends, ok word adiga putu, antonym madigte, first of all, manki dani synonym kachitanga telli alikada. Ok vocabulary each the a antonym madiga putu, manki dani synonym compulsory telli ali. So transient and a actually tellis te, antonym digiri valachu, transient and a taatkali kamantamu, Telugu low temporary and time or English low. So the meaning of the word transient means temporary, the meaning of the word transient means temporary, okay, something which is very temporary and time. But a temporary ki opposite and a mammalga aite permanent, ekra dona options lo permanent ekra undi, eternity. Eternity and a my dear friends, permanent and time, eternity and a amantamu, permanent and time, so that is a right answer here. So transient and a word ki opposite edigre, first of all, manki synonym telli ali. So transient and a taatkali kamantamu, temporary and time, then a opposite oshi, permanent and time, permanent and a eternity and a word ekra manki icharu. Ekremining options and a normal options se unai, slow and a delso, rest and a delso, shallow and a deep and time, iti koda telli say na koda, chaptunam. The meaning of the word is shallow, the meaning of the word is shallow, shallow is something which is very deep. And let's have a look at the next question, next question ekra manan these kunte, question number eleven chorandi. In the sentence identify the segment which contains the error, yes, ekra koda, find out the error and narrow spotting the error. Before I tell you the answer of this question, I have to tell you something important. Chalaman adutun tar, sir, spotting the errors elachiyaali, how do we do the spotting the errors? How do we find the spotting the errors and a chalaman adutun tar? Then ikokte solution my dear friends, when we do spotting the errors, always remember. Spotting the error, I mean error, I mean sport chegalaga and a rules of the grammar taroga undaali. Unless and until you are thorough with the rules of the grammar, it's not that easy to find the error, my dear friends. So their working conditions for downright unhealthy. So wallu ekra de punch esunara, working and a working conditions and time, a punch esunavatavaram. Asalu bago ledu oni chaptunar, asalu healthy ga ledu oni chaptunaro. And a anta bondi kada, mari error and antara, question low unhealthy and itcheru. My dear friends, question name itcheru, unhealthy and itcheru, unhealthy and a word choose te manaki, iti comparative degree kada. Ona, unhealthy and a word comparative degree kadi. Manaki sentence lo comparison jarginda, yavarnani yavartote na compare chase sama, ledu kada. We haven't compared anybody with anybody here, compare chase nete aite nisanga unhealthy than and ravalikada. Ekadha mayindha, compare chase sena compare to degree rayaalikani, nen compare chekunda compare to degree, and a la use chase sanu. Kabati ekra unhealthy and unka koda du, positive degree a undaali, positive degree and a unhealthy and time. Unhealthy and a the compare to degree, then a positive degree and a unhealthy and time. But a una options low unhealthy ekru ni my dear friends, ekra manki kala go error find out shame and narrow kabati error aite ekra undi. But ekra manki undaalsana word chaptunanu, unhealthy, ekra undaalsana word and a unhealthy and time, ekra undaalsana word and a unhealthy and time. So their working conditions were downright unhealthy and time, their working conditions were downright unhealthy and time. I hope the point is clear, so comparative degree lakunda, comparison lakunda, compare to degree vaadwal savaasram ra koda kada. Chalo next, let's have a look at the next question my dear friends, question number twelve chorandi. Identify the best way to improve the underlying part of the sentence, di ne mani mane amantamo, sentence improvement and time chadama. My mother insists on setting up something every day for charity. Ekra manam ardhanches kalsana avasram undi, because sentence improvement cheyal and a purukoda, we definitely have to understand the meaning of the sentence. What are you trying to convey from the sentence, what are you actually trying to say from the sentence? My mother insists on setting up something every day for charity. Charity and donations danaalu, so every day my mother enjoy sir, every day my mother keeps something aside and time. So charity kosamante, yavarki help cheyadan ki, manam, manam mother enjoy sir and a, konta food item avachu, edana, ok you know money avachu whatever. Charity ki danaalu cheyadan ki konta items ni pakka na peritunaru, mari pakka na patida name and time one ndaka nechkunam kada. Pakka na patida name and time my dear friends, setting aside and time kabati, ide answer ochesindi. Aside and a keep, you know, pakka na patida mandam my dear friends, pakka na patida name and time, setting aside and time okay, setting aside and time. Me kiko vishen chaptan ekra, answer aite easy gane ochindi kani, insist and a word eprochna on ravalii, on eprochna ING ravalii. Edi ekra grammar koda, and and the kanna options low, adi banay undi, ekra tapa. We ranachu sir, second option yundu koraong and a main reason and a, ekra innu unka koda du because manandarka prepositions low, nechkunevka, very important point and a. Insist eprochna on ravalii, on eprochna verbu undia verbu and a the ING low undaali, okay? So do two important points we can extract from this beautiful question. Let's move on to the question number thirteen my dear friends, so select the most appropriate meaning of the idiom. Ite staff selection exam, SSC and a idioms chala pa prepare avali. But the problem with idioms is idioms lo manki syllabus unda kante, there are thousands and thousands of idioms. Illa una putu and a, ok target petkum manave prepare avali, for example, per day ok twenty idioms, anukuna, per month isdeka manam six hundred idioms adukochu. And ne gurtuntai and a, yes, and ne gurtundu ka pochka ni maximum gurtuntai, because idioms and a the manam practice chase talavat aipote. Ite ekra inkoka problem untundi, when the idiom comes independently in a sentence, it's slightly difficult to identify. However, when the idiom comes along with the sentence, it is easy to guess. Here we are lucky because ekra idiom manki sentence to part two ochindi, chudama. For a long time, chala kalam nunchi koda, for a long time, chala kalam nunchi koda, ema indatta? Chala kalam nunchi koda, he kept his wife dash, it is not the dash and kundi, he kept his wife dash about the true nature of his job. And a chala kalam, athano yeh chase stran, athan chase a job enti, a vishamala wife ki telli konda daachyaru, and a vala wife ki telli konda daachyaru. Kabati, telli ka poda name and a me andar ki tell us so, ignorance and time, so he kept his wife in ignorance, ignorance and a telli akapodam. So in the dark and a in ignorance, telli akapodam, okay na, clear ga undi kada? Let's have a look at the next question, number fourteen, select the most appropriate option and narrow chudama. The security for the prime minister has been dashed up following the shootout, yavannarandi? The security for the prime minister, the security for the prime minister has been dashed up following the shootout. So prime minister yoka security dash aindhi following the shootout, what is the meaning of the expression following the shootout? And a ok attack jaragachu, and a ok godava jaragachu, ok incident edana jaragachu, ok information ochindi, police luki. A information radam to security, enjoy sir, security enjoy sir, prime minister security tagista. Prime minister take security ni enjoy sir, security ni secure jasara. Security ki samannechu forty five jasara, forty five cheyadamante, build forts katadaman, you know constructing some forts and time. So security ni strengthen jasara, security ni beef jasara, security ni strengthen jasara kada, kabati ide right answer. And a chalaman the anukuni mistake chase saru, nobody the right answer is this. So security enjoy sir and a make more stronger jasara, inka security ni balopetam jasara, beef and a and a make stronger and time. Security ni strengthen chavasa panle, and a security epus strength to de undundi, security already strong and a untundi, security and a strong people kada. Kabati ekamali dani strong chekal, stronger cheyal, beefed up, ekra inkora reason and a, strengthen perita appravalsapavasram unda. Because ekra preposition apkundu choose era question low, so preposition apkunna, apkunna putu ekra undaalsana word and a beefed up pantam my dear friends. You shall say word and a beefed up pantamu, very, very, very important word, try to understand this, okay? So illa koli salu manaki grammar koda chala help chase so undi kada. Chalo, let's have a look at the next question, select the word which means the same as a group of words. Ala manar question chudama manam, question amanar a chorandi. Di ne koda mane amantam and a one word substitute and time amantam my dear friends, one word substitute. Made or done without previous preparation, it want to previous preparation lakunda, suddenka appati kapu cheyda ni, aim and time. Appati kapu cheyda name and time delsa impromptu on top. Adhe it want to preparation lakunda, suddenka apprakupu maatlaite daan name and time and a extemporantam kadi. Appati kapu preparation lakunda, suddenka edana vishani maatlaite extemporantam, mo general, general word and a impromptu on time, okay na? So reminding words kado, avani normalga vaade words se, urgent, prompt, immediate, these are all very normally used words. Chalo, let's have a look at the next question, the name and time and andar ki tellsthe, ni amantamu, close test and time. Chala mandi ki doubt undu, sir, close test ela cheyal, why dear friends, close test she set up to manam, paragraph motam chavalsavasram undu. You have to read that sentence to get that answer, chudama, mere kalis chadama chorandi. So let's start reading here, let's start reading from here. Democracy should dash dignity, democracy dignity neen cheyal and a support cheyal, kada? Kani is wrong answer, yundu koraong sar and a, en puthi ga chadu vera, chorandi ok sorry. Democracy should dash dignity of the individual, of an a preposition, support dignity of the individual, keep dignity of the individual. Build dignity, payga should ochindi, should and a verbu first form low undaali kani, this is second form, ensure and a. Ensure dignity of, ensure dignity, ensure and a barosa ival and a, barosa ivali and time, barosa ni kalpinjali and time, okay na? So barosa ivali and time, next short and evanaro. Democracy should, iti gondi, democracy should ensure dignity of the individual, barosa dignity ekra kapadali undaali. It should also aim at the dash good, my dear friends, it should all, it should also aim at. Da and a ok word icha, epri da icharo, a the superlative degree and a vishaw, manandaki tell us kada. If pray temari superlative degree ochindo adjective third form low undaali, mari vannikoda third forms, mari yala. So democracy gurich chaptu amanar, it should also aim at the dash good of. So heaviest baru vayin and time, ekra baru ki samanle ledandi, smallest kadaandi. So largest good and time, kada yavantamu, greatest good and time, largest good kadaandi.